Alright, everybody, we're going to begin our meeting. So, who wants to go?
So, here in the city council, good evening. So, we have a special workshop tonight on the country vista corridor analysis. The intent for the, this evening, we've got KJ Hamley and Charles Allen from Salt Lake City with Parametrics to present tonight, but I just wanted to kind of set the stage. All we intend to do tonight is present you with some facts and recommendations and answer your questions. This is kind of a precursor to the draft report. We have questions set up throughout the presentation, places to pause. We're trying to ask it in a way, hold your questions until we get to this question slide so that we can kind of present things in a logical manner. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to KJ.
Alright. Thanks for having me here tonight. So we have, as Lisa mentioned, we have Charles Allen is, hopefully if everything goes well, the technologies we're adapting, he's running the screen there and will be going through the presentation. So, yeah, as she mentioned, my name's KJ Hamley with Parametrics. I work out of the Spokane office here and been working with you guys for, I think, come on, three years now. So, bringing Charles as our transportation planner to help. So, he's going to kind of go run through and then if we have questions, I'll try to help let him know or make sure we're shouting out to him as we can hear and we'll get on with it. Okay? Go ahead, Charles.
Okay, thank you. How can everybody hear me?
Good.
Very good. Hey, glad to hear. Now, you can hear me, but you may not, you can't see me. So, I thought it would be helpful, since this is a pretty unique thing for us to be doing, that you want to have a face-to-face with the voice. So I thought I'd send up a picture of myself. Something that you can just keep in mind when you're hearing me talk and maybe that's real. Sorry, no reality, that's what I really look like. Not quite the same movie star to date as this is a movie. Anyway, I think I might have the knowledge that he doesn't have on some subject, at least. So, I'm happy to explain and present the results of the analysis so far. I'd much rather do this in person, but I'm glad that we did to do this due to the conditions of the general rule today. So, an outline of what we're going to talk about. The first subject that we need to discuss is the background context of the corridor. Then we'll move into talking about the existing conditions. Next on the agenda is type of what's coming and how does that affect the corridor? And then finally, that all come together in the recommendations that we have. Now, KJ has mentioned this. It's a little bit difficult to manage the discussion remotely of these two. So, I would ask that all of your questions, and I have specific break points in the presentation for, I'm sad to ask, to ask questions. That way you can try and keep a flow going and then we can also address the questions that may in the presentation. So I'll share pretty frequently, so you'll have a lot more opportunity to ask the questions that that they may come up. So, first of all, on the background context. So, our focus is for the city's drive corridor. About a mile and a half long section from the Applewood Bridge over to Henry Lake Road. Now, depending the type of the ways and the nature for the corridor. Here's the map for the city. Small of the corridor is surrounded by the M2 zone. There's a little bit of M3 over on the east side and then we have a small pocket of the C2 zone. Now, how that fits into play, the M2 zoning, I have some principles in city code that are important members to discuss the existing future needs of the corridor. So, a couple of items that describe this zone that are applicable to show to your planning is encourage walking, don't turn into driving. She mentioned neighborhood, another employment area and also trans, bring them up, where they develop its traditional lines on the automobile and apartment maintenance. The M3 zone has some similar language. It's meant to be the heart of the community and has similar principles to M2 in terms of encouraging walking and transport development. And then, or in the G2 zone, it's, it's a little bit more on commercial grade, a little bit more vehicle oriented, but it's something still, you know, prevents strict commercial development and provide the services both major financial centers. So with, you know, holding in mind, this is the type of zoning that applies for a corridor and have that mind because the elements of the corridor, the transportation elements should support that and help us achieve our goals. The language in the comp plan is, is pretty similar in terms of the land use identified as a community center, which contributes to district and a three-way commercial. So, very in sync with the notion which it did. The 2015 park surveying open space and trails plan shows the corridor as a future freeway and some of it is, the corridor has been identified as an extended corridor, but a whole arc, if you will. So basically, it's a lot of information to make the, you know, a real asset to. Is that, is this our first question, Ray? Do you have any questions that came up within you or if you want to follow up with a question about?
Nope, I think we're good at this one.
From a, a very familiar way, so it's important to understand the context of the corridor as we begin to envision the future conditions. So as part of this study, we've conducted traffic counts all over the city. These were collected in November 2019. These feed into our short-term analysis as well as they'll help with the long-term analysis that will continue as we get deeper into the study. But we collected AM PM T tower turnover counts of over a dozen intersection around the city and then three-day two counts of various roads around the city as well. So pretty comprehensive counts to really understand what the traffic pattern are of the city. Now, one of the existing conditions on the corridor. Well, it's a, it's a, what we call five-minute rotation, meaning to travel in each direction from Senator Newland until it has a pavement of about 70 feet. And there's a 10-foot park strip, six sidewalks, vegetation along the corridor as well. So it's a fairly wide road. And the averaging traffic volumes on the corridor range from around 1,000 to almost, almost 14,000 vehicles per day, depending on which end of the corridor you're on. There's a speed limit transition points where they're on a curve at Henry Road. The heat of the curve is 30 miles an hour and then the curve is about 45 miles an hour. And of course, we hear that the conditions of the road often encourage traffic speeds that are, that are much higher than that. Currently, while all streets intersecting the road are stop control, other than the signal that they like low road and of course, you know, with the signal that hits into the high school to go big coming in pretty soon. There's the missing crosswalk with a pedestrian refuge. Provide the home depot across from Legacy Chilis. And there are a bike lane on both sides of the road for the entire stretch of the corridor into sidewalks, even on, given through the vacation areas of the plant. And then also there are plenty of trees that are along the corridor, forgotten how it was before. And we know that within the order that that type of vegetation will continue as, as developed for along the corridor. So, what's coming? We worked closely with Lisa and other city staff to get a, a sense for the types of developments that are expected to occur within the next five years or so. Of course, there's new high school going in, in addition to some old area down the residential next to it and of course, we mentioned for the signal going in across from the high school. And we expect that the legacy rates and legacy reprints will continue to develop in the next five years. And then, we anticipate that the big chunk of the land will start to develop commercial land uses as it's, you know, currently zone in the comp plan. What I think we want to, to mention is that, you know, that this is a mixed road path that we anticipate to occur. And whether it occurs within the next five years, it's going to occur regardless of the land uses and the platform and the type of themselves. What we want to do is understand what's coming so that we can prepare for it, not necessarily in this study to, to restrict what's coming, but we want to understand what may be coming so that we can do, understand the need for the corridor and how it, you know, it affects the curve. Of course, the, the ready-to-go I-90 is going to be movement to, well, increase the connectivity of the city moving on the inner side of I-90. I'll mention also that there is a planned left service. It's a, it's a plan to reroute the mission on the other hundred is the corridor. And so that'll provide service from the Harman Drive over to the Spokane Dodgers there. And that is planned to be implemented in 2021. Another thing that's coming that we want to mention is a project to install a raised median throughout the corridor which is planned to be constructed, I think, in about 2024. So, what does, what does mean in terms of how it can affect the transportation system? We did a trip generation analysis of the anticipated land uses that it discussed previously. We're working closely with the city. And we could also estimate that the amount of trips, we have a purchase of this of low on this system. And so, the area is divided up into different quadrants based on traffic analysis of regional traffic demand. A little bit of a leap there, but what this means is it is a, an estimate of numbers of daily threats that new growth could inject into the system. So it's, it's a pretty significant amount when we start to add all the different land uses, the residential, the commercial, the high school, all together. Where these are, they're to go in and out of the new land uses and heading west and east. So it doesn't all directly look into one point with the transportation ever, but it does disperse to some degree. So, this is the, the forecast for how, of what may occur from the development in the next five years. And this is the basis for trying to understand what conditions are for, for the time period. So, sort of take a question, Ray. Are there any questions about what we've discussed so far?
I just have a quick question. The 8, 900 figure we saw of the additional expected trips, looking on the southwest side of the slide, I'm assuming that included the high school trips?
Yes. That includes the high school trips, the little bit of the residential that's going in next to the high school, in addition to an estimate of some sort of development near the high school and those apartments.
I assume what you're thinking of 8, 900 trips is from the north, I think, I'm saying it. Charles, a little bit?
Yeah, Charles, that second question?
Charles, I have a question. This is KJ Allen. Why the huge imbalance between the 800 trips and the 8, 900 trips east and westbound? How do, how do, how do we use those figures that, that incremental increase in the development? I'm not following that.
So the question is why the, the imbalance between eastbound and westbound?
Correct.
Okay, so, let me briefly try to illustrate. I don't even see the cursor on the screen, but these 8, 900 trips, these are the trips expected to be generated south of Country Vista Drive and they can handle east and west. And then these 800 trips are the trips expected to be generated in this little triangle of land, north of Country Vista Drive, south of I-90.
So as the origin of the trips, this is what this is showing, is where do the trips originate from? Gotcha.
That's, that's right. So, if we, 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 if we,
hold on, Charles, a couple more questions. Great, Charles, this is Dan. There was a slide that depicted where, uh, traffic counts were taken. How many in count total, traffic count positions were there?
Can you help like this?
Okay, I was simply like, how many locations do we lay down the scripts to count cars?
Yeah, I'll go back to that graphic. On the day there was maybe about 12. So, the red line, they're even on the line.
Cool. And KJ, describing the methodology to place those, the decisions made that had put those?
Yeah, I wanted to hit most of the major roads and, and get pretty good coverage over the city. So how would the major drive be tenured? And, and if there aren't the limitations, for example, you know, nobody's really driving a pretty busy road, but it's, it's often hard to lay down the tubes in that area because there's so many turning movements that can, that can mess with the accuracy counters. You know, and another factor drive is that we wanted to get enough counts to help us calibrate the regional travel demand law.
Uh, one follow-on question on the modeling. I see that predicted at build-out trip count, would the model have predicted any movement across the Henry Road Bridge, that future bridge?
Uh, so the question is, does the traffic model assume that?
Uh, would it, yeah, have accounted for trips now across a new route?
Um, it can, yeah. You can comb in new roads into the regional travel demand model. Now, I want to make sure that I'm being clear. None of the analysis results that I presented so far included anything for what I'm calling the regional travel demand model, which is the main forecasting tool for long-term. And in the results today, we'll be presenting information that are from short-term projections. So we, we have to use the regional travel demand model to develop the results I'm showing today. But I will say that in, in analysis, we have assumed the effect of the, the Henry Bridge and how traffic may converge onto that bridge.
I'm going to paraphrase the illustration. It sounds like the model did take into account then the alternate, you know, new replace route and that the numbers in your prediction actually would include the potential addition of that bridge.
Correct.
I have a question still. Notice that on your slides that none of the buildable lands north of Henry, even though they're not right on the Applewood Corridor, were not highlighted. Is that part of the equation?
They are part of the equation and you're right, I did not highlight those in the analysis, but we actually went and figured why and looked at, hey, what are the land likely to develop in the next five years? Ran a trip generation analysis and loaded those trips distributed throughout the network. So, yeah, today, first and again, this focuses on reporting on the land use adjacency to the County Vista Drive corridor. But, you know, the middle school, I recognize development around Michigan, current development on, uh, hard, you know, are closely with the city, you know, with the regional projections for all those areas.
And that's the slide I'm referring to right there. It just seems to me most of what's north of Henry is going to dump out onto Applewood. Very, uh, how's your business? Very, yeah, that's your business, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, this is what you're saying, there's definitely going to be, you know, trips coming from, you know, the north side of I-90, east and south, and getting on the County Vista Drive. And vice versa, and that's, that's something we took into account, the citywide trip distribution process.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, if we're ready, we're gone, we'll get into the next section of the presentation, which is talking about the, some of the future conditions and certainly get into some of our recommendations. So, we outlined the major intersections on the corridor. And the typical way to report intersection is this sort of concept called level service often meaning level west. Would you have seen this report? It's a little bit like getting a report card from the school. We break level service on a scale from A to F, and the best, and it's the worst, and it's defined by the average vehicle delay experienced at the intersection. And so, and there's if, value points for whether your intersection is signalized or unsignalized. So for example, if you are average vehicles, have 10, 15 seconds of delay and unsignalize intersection, you're level service D. If average, on average, vehicles are waiting over 50 seconds, then you run into level service F. Unlike school where you can bring home a bunch of D, your parents are going to stole you and the traffic world D is, is about where we want to get to. Anything worse than D F or retention for mitigation, we're ways to improve it. But level service D is not the scary thing in the traffic world because it means that we haven't necessarily overbuilt our system. We wanted everything to be level service A and we have giant roads that some of the extra capacity for a month and days.
You clarified.
Um, I'm just talking about how this is changing. And there's one more, the, the point of, uh, unsignalized intersection of service is not measured for the higher section, but just the stop control movement. Could be on the experience delay on the, on the through road that is not a stop sign. We did a close look at two of the major intersections on the corridor, that's Henry Road and Legacy Rich Drive. And today, we give an E and a D for those two as shown on the table. But then with this short-term growth, we expect that both of them would go to levels of this F, meaning if on the side street you're experiencing quite a bit of delay. Now, you know, one caveat on, on small roads, getting an E or a F, doesn't always mean we have to do something. If the volumes are low and the choose, or the, the number of stacked vehicles is pretty short, then, you know, it's not something we always address correctly because it just means a few people are impacted, they have to wait a little while before they can turn onto the road. But when we get into the F, and particularly, when we dig into the details here, these F are pretty bad, it indicates that delay is getting pretty effective at the intersection. So, I've explored both a signal and a roundabout configuration, that's equalation, to see how they would do and to understand what would be the best fit for this corridor. So, talk about roundabouts first. With roundabouts, it's, it's pretty important to size them appropriately. And we used some guidelines from the literature that's out there to understand what, what side of the roundabout would these intersections lead to function with the expected traffic demand. So, the guidelines provide some planning level, rubrics to help you understand what sides are the number of approach lanes that each lane of the roundabout would need to have. So, the way this works is you, you add up two numbers, the number of vehicles circulating roundabout by one of the roundabout entry points, combined with number of vehicles entering the roundabout at that entry point. And if that total is less than 1,000, then a one-lane entry is likely to work on that lane. When we get over 1,000, then a two-lane entry becomes much more likely. Then when we hit about 1,300, it's pretty much given that you're going to have to have a two-lane entrance for that way of the roundabout. To look at the projected PM peak hour volumes at the, the Henry Road intersection, this graph is showing you the entering volume for the lane plus the circulating volume. And each of these legs exceed 1,000 and some exceed 1,300. So let's just get that, okay, this location probably needs a roundabout with two-lane entries on all of the lanes, not most of the lanes. So, there are those apparently similar to Legacy Rich Drive, watching a little bit smaller, but we did see, getting the PM peak volumes that here on the east leg, we, we exceeded 1,000 and made close to 1,300. So, if we look at these numbers in AM, they tend to mirror each other, so we'd probably see similar numbers on the west leg if we look at the AM volume. So this analysis suggests that what you would need in these locations is you want to do roundabout likely, two-lane approaches on Country Vista. And then, probably with those that'd be good enough, you wouldn't necessarily make two-lane approaches on, you know, Henry and to Rich Drive. But you need basically that the two, three lanes east-west to the roundabout. So here's a couple of screenshots of what those roundabouts look like. They're not so uncommon, but this is, this is that roundabout you need to have enough capacity to handle the volumes of projecting. So, you know, two lanes going through the roundabout east and west. On, on the graphic tickles, there's a little more straightforward to analyze and I provided some information here in regards to signal warrant analysis. If you haven't heard about this before, every time you've got a signal, you run it through the signal warrant in the NEPCD. Long after them, but essentially the, the guidebook for all traffic times striking the same sentence. And it provides these warrants, so as part of the larger engineering study, this type of signals needed, you check these warrants and if you meet one, then, then that starts to make the case for, you might think about a signal here. Doesn't mean that a signal is required, it didn't know it itself, but most of the time, jurisdictions will not put in a signal unless it meets one of the warrants. Now, we don't have all the data to, to run through every single warrant, nor is it really going to help us in this analysis, but we did compare some volume projections against what's called the, the eight-hour warrant. So, for eight hours of the day, the volume on various lengths of intersection, Patrick C, third threshold. So, the combined volumes on the major leg, Henry Rich Drive, like Patrick C, 900, and the volume on the minor leg, Patrick C, 75. So, these are the, to restore the Legacy Rich Drive intersection, so today, this is about where we are, where we're meeting six of eight hours. You have to meet, meet these thresholds eight hours of the day in order to satisfy the warrant. Now, when we start to look at the short-term growth volume, were there? 12 hours of this timeframe from that. And I, I didn't use that for time, but it was from about 7:00 AM to, you know, about 7:00 PM for what these ones are. So, you know, providing this, to just provide a little bit of guidance that, okay, does the volume of the Legacy Rich Drive, it's not quite meeting this warrant, but as development occurs, we certainly expect to get there. So, um, roundabouts versus signals. Now here's a comparison of the AM level of service or the AMF scale of these two intersections. Again, with the growth, and they're a massive, they're a lot bigger than F. If we add a roundabout signal, we get into the AMV range, which is correct, or they would operate on their both options. There are several other considerations to make in decision between roundabout and signal. One of them is right-of-way, where roundabout has a bigger footprint, makes it more room than a signal. Roundabout likewise, tend to be a little bit either maintain because you don't have the infrastructure like the, the signal heads and the mass arms and all the wiring of a traffic signal. But you do have to handle the land keeping. And to further safety, roundabouts offer fewer conflict points, meaning fewer opportunities for vehicles to cross paths than, than a signal. The vice combination experience can be very different for both a roundabout and a signal. Under a roundabout, you are crossing the length of the roundabout without a signal to stop traffic for you, and that means you have to wait for vehicles to yield at any cross. Whereas if a signal, you get the walk begin and you have a protected movement as you go. And that's pretty broken for more vulnerable users like now users, elderly users, the blind, where it's, it's each of them that navigate a signal. Likewise, they experience for cyclists in, for, for the signal going through roundabout cycle test to, sometimes have to weave with traffic and a roundabout, a cyclist has to sometimes have to weave with traffic and try to compete with vehicle speed. Like we're thinking a left turn, it would be pretty difficult. So, cyclists will get off a roadway and will keep those pedestrian crossings and navigate around two or three lengths of the roundabout that way. Some get into the circle, and then execute cars for space within the circle itself. Now, is the matter of, do you like digging into some treatments around the corner, or drivers want to respect when they get to a major intersection? Considering all these factors, our recommendation is sign for signals at these two locations. That provides the most consistency. There's already a signal going in, crossing the high school, you have a signal getting into the corridor of the middle lane road. And given the signs of roundabouts that would be needed, there are even issues or there's some past concerns in community about two-lane roundabouts. And then there's some potential environmental issues at the Henry Road intersection with that big, bigger intersection footprint that a roundabout requires, and may start taking things up. Environmental concerns, and the case in mind. And then to finish your bike combination, we need to back to those principles in the zoning code and in the top plan, the level of order to be very friendly, promote the package transportation, logging exactly, and the signals will help provide that experience a little more still in the roundabouts. Now, for your next question, we've run with quite a lot, so what questions do you have about this information?
Knowing where we're currently at with this corridor, and knowing what the speeds were that you addressed earlier, I imagine there'd be recommendations based on what's going to be going in there with the high school and potential broad-based business, that there would be a thought or discussion about modifying those speeds, where it's 45 down to 35? Do you guys look at that, or did you discuss that during this process?
Okay, so your question is, are there recommendations or thoughts about the speed limit, and whether the speed limit ought to be modified on the corridor?
Correct.
You're right. Speeds are a tricky thing. We've been changed signs, drivers rarely respond very well to the signs themselves. Where we get the most bang for our buck is changing the character, the nature of the roadway. So, as you have more roadway dangers, like, you know, building that are that too far back, landscaping more to ride, and we're in the world, drivers will naturally start to lower their speed because they perceive there's more conflict and more things they need to be aware of. So, what's really going to help the corridor the most is to continue developing and including, you know, the landscaping amenities, the raised medias, time to go in. And so, I would suspect that at that time, that goes, Daniel, find that the speed do-over, and then it's a better fit to lower the speed when instead there's the character of the roadmap is those kinds of scenes.
I have a question, Charles. So, when you were looking at your level of service, and I don't know, I'm going to guess you did, but maybe not, did you look at the accident reports that we have at Henry and Country Vista, and also Legacy Ridge and Country Vista?
Well, we're just having a look at the accident reports, and then just know we've not looked at that.
So, we can provide.
That would be, that would be, that might seem to be a great thing to look at, for sure.
Okay. Just, the reason why I'm asking is that so far, as we know, and we mentioned here, I think over a year ago, the Legacy Ridge, the topography, the turning movements during peak hours, especially when buses are there, has been a concern in our community. So, I didn't know if the record of accidents was part of your analysis or not.
Yeah, that is a point, and it's not. But you bring up a good point, it's right on the curve, and so, when you're trying to make a, you know, a left turn out like Legacy Ridge, and you have reduced visibility because you're craning your neck to try and see, you know, here on the curve.
Yeah. And then just one other kind of just observation along with what Mayor Brickner mentioned, is on that Country Vista corridor, when you're coming off the east side, which is the middle lake road, all the way to the valley, which is Barker, it's 35 on either end. And so, it just kind of makes sense that 35 is that speed limit of the whole corridor. But I totally agree, right now, it's a speed limit because there's no, there's nothing that wants you to slow down.
Right.
As far as medias and driveways. And so, as we develop though, moving it to 35 and creating those natural incentives to slow down with medias, like we do on Apple, like kind of replicating that.
Yeah, and so I understand VIMs are very, very touching subject, and, you know, if you want, right, if you go on change speed limits, and then as soon as we give it, then you get a lot of complaints about it's speed trap, you know, it's too low, and they're like, I'm crossing through the corridor. Instead, we're challenging.
So, I'll throw a question, actually to Sergeant Morgan. Can you recount, we did actually try and make that 35, I think, right?
We did, at one point.
Could you tell me about your experience with that, Sergeant Morgan?
Well, I don't have any, all the data right off the top of my head, but basically, anytime you try to reduce the speed in an open country area like that, it's just ridiculous the speeds that are going through there. So, people are, we've had people going 80 miles an hour through that corridor, right, in that stretch. Matter of fact, we had a motorcycle this morning that we discharged a breakfast driving this morning during that stretch. It was in an 80 miles an hour, and a 45.
Wasn't me.
You don't have any, where you had?
No.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Charles, great information, a lot to look at. You might have addressed my questions at the very start, and I missed it. The analogy that you're giving us, is it based on that build-out?
So, the question is based on the build-out, and it's not build-out. It, I would say it's a, if that company blood that could grow, that could occur within the next five years, you know, it's always something to change, but the important thing is to understand that, you know, that this road represents the path to build-out, and so it's probably coming either way, if not within the next five years. But there is, there is certainly more that will, that's entitled and done, if anything, for the quarter, but this is a pretty significant step towards build-out, I would say. And I would say that we are going to stepping to the long-term analysis after this, but I, the recommendations that we presented today are pretty robust, and they should be able to handle the build-out traffic as well, this short-term one.
Okay, Danny, why I ask that question is because we're going to have the roundabout with the idea of a single lane or a double. Once we build a roundabout, if we build it for a single and anticipate total build-out 18,000 to 20,000, then we'll have to try to change it. It's somewhat an attractive. So, that's why I asked the question, is it designed for build-out of 18,000 to 20,000 people, and also anticipating build-out around us, south of us, where that lane would be developed, and also?
Yeah, that's a good point. And that's one of the reasons we look at, hey, there may be single lane or double lane, because like you said, you don't know the single lanes that have to come in to map where it's likely to be. And so, yeah, the number is staying with this road that you need for two lanes, and then that would likely be sufficient for a long-term. Same with the signals, did I kind of go back to the level service table? I'm not seeing this screen change on my end, I have to go back to, you know. There we go. So, with this short-term growth, the roundabout signal review, level service A to B, I think there's quite a bit of capacity in there to absorb before the surface speed, a failure. You're not going to have to like double in or even more to really make the distribution fail. That's also something that will show up in a slight amount, pretty soon.
Thank you.
Danny, ready to continue?
We still only have questions?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I heard you right. The goal is to get a grade of a D?
Yeah, a D or better.
The point is that the level of service is done at PMP hour. So, and the concept, the concept of the level of service D is that people have not overfilled your intersection because 11 hours of the day is going to be less than that. So, and again, the, it's based on the, of the leg, and I believe, is it 55 seconds per vehicle at the level of service D in the center?
Yeah, so for, for an unsignalized intersection, when you exceed 35 seconds of average delay, then you get into level service E, and the signal yet is 55 seconds. So, the average delay is more than 55, then that's what we consider a failure point.
Okay.
Is a, of an intersection, like, so much longer than it actually is?
Yeah.
That's a peak.
Then you're?
That's a PMP. So, so that's the?
Not every time.
It's not every time, only in that 20 minutes of PMP.
A D and a?
Yeah, that's right. If we build facilities to have a level service A during the PMP, then, then we kind of run out of land to build home to business because there really need a lot of road.
So, my other question then is, on your evaluation for the intersection, if Henry and Country Vista did it, that anticipated new access with the bridge over there?
Yeah, it does, and assuming that fourth lane, the intersection, all the traffic coming from that leg.
Thank you.
Charles, I'm sorry, I have one more question. With this smart technology, does it change your level of service during the PMP or AMP? Can it change?
So, the question is, what effect does smart technology have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the jury's still out on that one. I think it really go either way. There's, there's some who say that smart technology will allow cars to drive inches apart from each other, and so we could just push a ton more cars through the intersection than, than human drivers can. There's others who also say that cars can drive themselves, will have a giant increase in the number of trips, because we're no longer driving, so we just send the car out to run over errands for us, and it's just constantly drive around. Number of cars could dramatically increase on the road as well, and offset any benefits we get from how the drive works.
So, my question is, could you take a D and make it a C during the PMP using smart technology? I'm hearing the jury's still out.
Yeah, I think you can, definitely can, or in theory you can. The question is, are we going to flood the road with more cars because they can drive themselves?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Question.
Yeah. It's a super fun topic, and I could kind of go deeper into it, but.
That's okay.
Yeah. I'm going to watch and play it.
One more.
Charles, Kenny, did you get, we promote our city as a trail, walking, bicycles, bicycles, things of the sort here. Is it taken into consideration, because we emphasize so much on that, that there will be a slowdown for car traffic around roundabouts and lights because we will have more people walking, bicycling, or with their golf carts? Is that taken into consideration compared to other cities?
Now, there, there kind of leads into my next topic, which is about mid-block crosswalks. Yeah, now, I guess they're all saying maybe you can spin off the question a little bit, if, if you want to towards a good pedestrian flow on a corridor, and, and save, as your comfortable crossing opportunity, having safeguards at these locations can help that effort, maybe a little more than roundabouts. There's just a different experience for the pedestrian and cyclists in all of those.
All right, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, we ready to move, continue?
Yep. About 10 minutes, 15 minutes roughly.
Uh, next topic is crosswalks. It's important to get this drive, we want to make sure that the types of crosswalks and the locations of crosswalks on a corridor are a good fit, for the pedestrian, the media, for the character of the corridor, something to provide the, the safe and comfortable kind of thing, and maximizes both the vehicle and the pedestrian compliance. A couple things to note, the faster we drive, the more our common vision narrows, and the less we're able to perceive somebody on the side of the road in our periphery. There's also the concept of expectation that these, and you want the right type of crosswalk for a corridor. We don't expect crosswalks on freeways, and so even if they're once unpainted, nobody's going to stop for it. It's also the con, leading to the concept of momentum that while we're driving, when we're fast or when a heavy stream of vehicles, we tend not to stop for a pedestrian on the side of the road, or sometimes halfway across the road. And in, the bigger the path of the road, the easier of the infrastructure we need for a man vehicle to stop at a sign to right of way. Important thing to keep in mind, now, the corridor, the discussion of the appropriate type of crosswalk, crosswalks for the corridor, there's some good literature and research about, about this topic. And the literature has found that any crosswalk alone will necessarily make crossing safer, and in fact, under certain conditions, a marked crosswalk alone, you can just a plain strike crosswalk, is inefficient, and these conditions are certainly what we see on this corridor, speaking, 40 miles an hour. And then, if you're A or B, or average average, you're going to exceed certain thresholds, and you need something more than just a straight crosswalk. And these thresholds were either meeting today, or expecting to meet in, in the short-term growth. Whether or not there's a refuge option, that's the difference between these criteria. So, this research says you need to do more than just a straight crosswalk under the conditions that we expect to find on this corridor. So, then what do we need? There's some additional, our research is pretty good, that divides the types of crosswalks into many into categories. One, simple crosswalk. Two, enhanced slash active, this is very hard to flag, or flagging signs, R and B is already being. Category three is a certain prepared signal. Most commonly, it's interpreted as a HAWK signal, if you've seen those before. And then lastly, just a regular traffic signal that shows protection, that's category four. So, how do you decide which one's the right fit for your corridor? This angry provides some, look-up graph, where you, you match the conditions of your roadway, you input the data, and it tells you this is the category of crosswalk treatment that you should apply. So, on this example graph, this graph is for safety jake foot roadway in our crossing distances, that means it's pretty close, speed's less than 30,000 miles an hour. And then you plot the PMP major roadway volume of one access, and then the pedestrian crossing volume of the other access, and then you plot your data point, the tier type of category that's recommended. So, in this case, I've added two bands for both the existing traffic and the traffic lines in Country Vista with short-term growth, and then cross that with a band. We don't know how much pedestrian traffic there will be trying to cross Country Vista, but you know, something's getting to around 100 is a reasonable estimate. So, the research showed us that as it now, the corridor, the crosswalk on the corridor needs some type of red signal, being like a HAWK being. Anyway, a refuge job is a little bit of a game changer. This is the same plot, same type of roadway, but with a medium refuge job, and so our crossing distance is, it's struck to, you know, 36 feet each with both legs, similar speed, we call, spot those lines again, and now our corridor falls within this enhanced slash active zone. So, when you have a medium refuge job, it's short of pedestrian crossing, and it reaches the, the, I guess, the degree of permitting that you need to get the, the best vehicle pedestrian compliance. So, looking at these recommendations, and looking at the corridors, meaning, the racing engines are going in, and so our recommendation is to have medium refuge jobs that all pedestrian crossing, and through your enhanced active treatment, use those armor empty flatters that exist today, and that provides really a consistency throughout the corridor. I've been on doors where there's more crosswalks, and they all have a different design, and it, it doesn't help both for the pedestrian experience and the driver experience to really understand what type, what come in, they're seeking out of the roadway. So, that's the recommendation for the type of crosswalk that should occur on the corridor. Now, where do they occur? That's going to be somewhat dictated by the actual development patterns that occur. Now, these crosswalks should be based from other crossings or signals. One rule is done, it's a money, they can interfere from the signal. And we want these crosswalks to support the pedestrian desire lines. So, where do people want to cross? What are the complementary landings that go and cross from each other on Country Vista Drive? Where? Where pedestrians will want to cross for one side. So get R F Bs with median refuge islands and place them, you know, some of the, some of guided by the actual development patterns. Thank you. We reached our next question break and this is our, the last one before the final slide of the, the presentation. Any, any questions about that, the jury?
Nope, got to go.
Okay. Next line of recommendations, just, just now about the size of the road today. It's five lanes, which means that its capacity is somewhere between thirty-five thousand and forty thousand vehicles per day. And there's some planning guidelines and, and the difference is just signal spacing there. If you have tight signal spacing, your capacity's a little lower than if you have too much. Space greater than Applewell. Today's traffic volumes to get in and out, you know, eleven, twelve, thirteen thousand range. And I would comment now, this is very relevant, Andrew, we're still getting into the long range forecast part of this study. But the range of road into the future, you know, is probably seventeen, twenty-five thousand vehicles per day. So the point is not to infer the excellence, just to show where we are in terms of reading, widening up the corridor. We're going to be just funding the highway construction for a long time and, you know, thinking about adding lanes is, is not something that's on the horizon anytime soon. Charles, about journey, we talked about empty putting in the transit line. They light up every kind of mine. Well, the actual location for this stuff is somewhat dependent on future development patterns. We have to, to be thoughtful about where they go and make sure that they best support the development that it goes, that that goes in. Our recommendation is that the future development should link their site design so that the bus stops have a clear path to, to buildings and centers of those landings. And then the option plan to accommodate concrete pads out near the road to fix shelters that S T A would put in. So similar to crosswalk, the actual locations of the bus stops, we wouldn't want to dictate right now, but be flexible as, as development goes in. The recommendations for the bike pedestrian experience, we sort of want to preserve the, the existing sidewalks and byeline. Those are fantastic amenities. We need to make sure that it's in. And then move forward with the, the bike pedestrian amenities on the new, a hundred upgrades. That's an important thing to have considering interstate and interchange themselves are often significant barriers for pedestrians and cyclists to cross. So having this opportunity for a bridge or a high median, we also take advantage of that. And that is in the scope of that project. So looking at that as a story. And then, yeah, as for code, we're going to be continuing the, the vegetation that's back at the sidewalk that, you know, through about half of the border, continuing that for the rest of the border to preserve that walk from the, and then as we discuss the speed, that will have some effect on the speed as well. In summary, this is a summary map of the major recommendations from our short-term analysis. Kind of do those. So we're working on finding for these signals to fight these rich drive in Henry Road. Starting, making sure that the bike pedestrian facility is not being reached as I go in. What time for those crosswalks, the refuge islands throughout the corridor? I'm happy to make sure that they are placed the way that they best support the land as they go in. And then, yeah, we talked a little bit about the bus stops as well, making sure they are in good location. And that we should be doing that blocking construction for quite some time. So that, that concludes the slides that I've presented today. What are the, the other questions that we have?
Any other questions? Hugh?
This is Hugh. One question I have is back to your analysis on today, our commissions are ranked an E or a D. Five years, an F and a F, roundabout B A, say what we can achieve a B and a B. At what point does that B and A for roundabout versus that B and a B for a signal? At what point do those deteriorate to a D or an E? Do they deteriorate to that by twenty forty? Or is there a year that you know past the five-year point?
So like what is, you know, what, what time the level service from the roundabout and signals, signal, when they, they would be upgraded? We haven't fully gotten into the long-term analysis, but it would take quite a bit to pretty close from a B to a D and I don't think we would see that by twenty forty. And that's, and that's based on the preliminary numbers that I've looked at. There's just a lot of extra capacity. And, yeah, again, I would, if I go back to this graphic here, we talk about the final capacity of a road being about thirty-five thousand vehicles per day. You tend to hit failure first on a roadway at the signal. There's a model next. And so to some degree, this is not necessarily a measure of the capacity of the road. It also is a question of the signal capacity. So if this is a reference point, it's to win, you might take care of those, those signal roundabout designs. But we got a long way to go.
Is there, does a roundabout versus signal tend to hold up longer? If we went for the two-lane roundabout versus a signal, hold up longer in terms of level of service?
So with a signal, you have a little bit more flexibility to accommodate future growth because you can change the signal timing. It can adjust and adapt to, you know, growth patterns. A roundabout, you're somewhat fixed with the infrastructure. So anything that you make, you have to, you're adding approach lanes or, or expanding to some extent of the circle. So there's going to have more flexibility with the signal to accommodate growth, but both can work pretty well. A two-lane roundabout has a lot of capacity. The signal is cordward. Should work pretty well. It's a line of the side street cars. These are, you know, major arches you're expecting around here to drive. So they're not likely to get over on you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is again, one more. I think there was an inference in your recommendation that a roundabout offers a better experience for the pedestrian or cyc, or excuse me, a signal offers a better experience for the pedestrian or cyclist than a roundabout. And I'm curious if there's any research or reported analysis to demonstrate that.
Well, the research shows that there are, you know, few collisions, well, let's say few fatal collisions between pedestrian and vehicles in a roundabout. Because people are half as slow when you enter the roundabout. So when collisions do occur, they're generally at lower speeds, a little bit more survivable. But you're always going to have the uncertainty for the pedestrian user as to, because that are going to stop. Am I clear to go? And particularly with the dual lane roundabout, you know, we have that issue of the first car, the first lane stops and the pedestrian proceeds. And maybe that car in the second lane doesn't see them and, and they, they don't stop. And for the signal, if you have that red light stopping vehicle, then there's a possible for the pedestrian. So it's a little bit more controlled environment and supports some of the more vulnerable users a little bit better than a roundabout.
Gosh, well, it seemed like the industry observations. I'm just curious, is there any reported analysis to demonstrate that?
Yeah, I think there have been some studies. Been a long time since I've looked at them. And in fact, most of them are, are single lane roundabouts because they're much more common than the dual lane roundabouts.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to have to break off our normally scheduled meeting. And if we have any further questions, we'll make sure that the account manager gets the questions out to you. Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go.
Go to your line.
Thanks, Charles.
A quick minute. You have a minute in the bathroom and we'll try to get to the rest of the bathroom.